The time is now 7:00 PM and the executive session has been concluded. Will all participants in the executive session please state their names for the record? Val Carr.
Aaron.
Noel Sawyer.
Hillary LeBarre.
Carol Harvey.
Val Carr. Thank you. If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go in the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns now. Hearing none, the next agenda item is pledge of allegiance. If you all please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will move on to item number 3B and Kip Wiley.
Thank you. I have the privilege tonight to introduce five of our wastewater operators. Last week was declared wastewater worker week and the governor declared that, made that proclamation, and I get to introduce our wastewater treatment staff to you tonight. If I could ask the gentlemen to come up front here real quick and I'll do an introduction. You guys can smile, it's okay. This is a very thankless job, if you will. The wastewater treatment plant, as you know, never stops running. 24/7, 365 days a year. You do not simply get to close a valve and not accept any flow, if you will. So these guys are on call for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And it's greatly appreciated. These guys protect our environment from anything that comes down the drain. And when I say anything, it's literally anything. You'd be surprised at what they receive and how they handle that and then also with the maintenance that occurs in everyday operation. So first Dan Stover, he's our chief wastewater operator. Next to him is Lawrence Norquist, Jason Caldwell, Evan Harmon, and John Scheck.
Great, thank you. I will read the proclamation in a minute, but as we like to do to honor those that go above and beyond in our community, we want to give all of you the mayor's pin on behalf of city council, the folks in this room, and our whole community. We really thank you for all you do. I know you're gonna have a great new facility to work in here in the next coming weeks and we really appreciate everything you do. So thank you all very much. Thanks, Val. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I'd also just like to add that with the expansion of the plant, they'll have a little bit of breathing room because the plant has been overloaded at about 117% of its design organic loading capacity for about the last six, seven years. And they've been in compliance the majority of every day. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Okay, while they have a seat, I will read the proclamation. Recognizing wastewater week whereas Woodland Park's water is a valuable economic, environmental, and recreational resource that should be protected. And whereas Woodland Park's wastewater treatment workers consistently work to improve the cleanliness of Colorado's streams, rivers, and lakes. And whereas Woodland Park's wastewater treatment workers include certified operators, maintenance personnel, laboratory workers, sewer maintenance workers, biosolids workers, individual waste pre-treatment workers, administrative workers, engineers, and suppliers. And whereas it is fitting to honor Woodland Park's wastewater workers for protecting the water and environment of this state, whereas John W. Hickenlooper, governor of the state of Colorado, did hereby proclaim the week of April 23rd, 2018 through April 27th, 2018 as wastewater worker recognition week. Therefore, I kneel Levy, Mayor of the City of Woodland Park, do hereby proclaim the week of April 30th, 2018 through May 4th, 2018 as wastewater worker recognition week in the city of Woodland Park. And thank you all very, very much. Okay, we'll move on to 3B and Deborah Mareska. I know I saw her somewhere. Come on up, Deb.
You couldn't hear me? Do I have to do it again?
There you go.
Deborah Mareska, 421 Old Kathleen Trail, Guffey, Colorado, 808-20. Park County, but the club is from Woodland Park. So Ride of Silence, May 19th, that's why I'm here. That and all my other events. We do four events a year, which Carl and everybody else knows about. Pete. But anyways, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The Ride of Silence is basically, it's a free event. We're gonna meet at Utah Brewery at 11 o'clock. We're gonna do a little four-mile, super slow ride, more like a funeral procession to honor cyclists that have ever been injured or killed while riding their bike. I'm a member of Bicycle Colorado, League of Bicycles, and I'm always hearing stories of cyclists that have been injured or killed. And it's just heart-wrenching to even pedestrians, you know, the distracted drivers of today, you know. And this year for the bike rodeo, we got flashing lights which to give out to the children to be more noticeable, to be seen. So we're real excited about that. We're gonna tie those in with Bike the Night, which is in July, where all the proceeds are going to benefit the high school mountain bike team. So anyways, Ride of Silence, any questions?
Thanks for everything you do, Deb. Appreciate it.
Yeah, seven years, so it's the seventh Ride of Silence. Anyways, okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, the proclamation's right there.
You bet. That is next. And I'm gonna give this one to you, Deb, before you leave. This is proclamation for Mountaintop Cycling Club, Ride of Silence, which is May 19th, 2018. Whereas what began as a one-time event in 2003 to honor a fallen bicyclist is now an international phenomenon occurring around the globe. And whereas the Ride of Silence is a silent, slow-paced bicycle ride to honor those who have been injured or killed while cycling on public roadways. And whereas composed of many, but riding as one, the Ride of Silence is a quiet call to the public announcing that bicycle safety is the responsibility of all users of public roads. And whereas the city of Woodland Park is committed to providing a safe bicycle environment and proudly supports the Ride of Silence. Now therefore, I kneel Levy, Mayor of the City of Woodland Park, do hereby recognize the Ride of Silence as an event to remind all citizens to recognize that bicycles belong on public roadways and ask motorists to commit to safely sharing our roadways with cyclists and to ask cyclists to commit to safety sharing our roadways with motorists. Approved this third day of May, 2018. Thank you very much, Deb, for everything you do. Suzanne, you wanna sign this and give it? Is that the way you wanna do it? Okay, we'll move on to item 3C and actually, we're gonna skip that. There was not enough participation for the Pike's predicament adventure race. And so we'll move on to Suzanne here in just a minute. And appointments to the Park and Rec Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mayor Levy and council. This evening, we have four terms that are open for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We've advertised them as council desires on Facebook, the city webpage, Channel 10, and we've received two applications. One application was received back from Carla Schweitzer, who is one of the incumbents on the board, and the other was an application received from Bob Carlson. Ms. Schweitzer, excuse me, is not here in the audience tonight, but Mr. Carlson is.
Okay, we have two for two?
Two for four.
Two for four. Okay, council, questions? Do you wanna question Mr. Carlson? Do you wanna approve the two without any further questions? What would you like to do? Noel?
I'd like to have our Parks and Rec Director talk about this board and what this board does. I think we can get more applicants if more people have understanding of what this actually does. I think Bob understands because he's part of the Aquatic Center and most people don't realize that Park and Rec has a huge influence on what goes on at the Aquatic Center. So we have two openings still. I think we could fill those pretty quickly. So I was hoping we could have a...
Cindy, you wanna give us a couple minutes on the Park and Rec Board?
Sure.
I think there could be more interest if people knew what it really does because I think it's been dormant for a while. And I mean, I know things have been going on in the background, but really, we haven't had, we don't have a liaison, so we don't know what's going on. So I hand it over to you.
So I am gonna say that the board has not been dormant. They've been very busy the past couple of years. We've had some major projects. We've had the Memorial Park project. We've had the Woodland Aquatic Center project. And then we've also just finished reviewing our Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan that is now 10 years old. So they've gone through that page by page in updating the things that have been completed in the last 10 years. So they're not just dormant, they are an active board and they are working. So I know that they'll appreciate me saying that for them.
When I say dormant, I mean, we really, it hasn't been the attention of council recently, but we know you've been doing a lot of great things behind the scenes.
Thank you.
So no argument there. So if I was gonna be on that board, what are the things I would be doing?
Well, one of the things is the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan.
Okay.
Is keeping that up to date and following the projects that are on there. So within the bylaws, it says the foremost duty and obligation is to review the Parks Trails and Open Space dedications for subdivisions, which we haven't had a lot of growth lately, so we haven't had a lot of that. But they do review those when they come through. Many times, we're looking for fees in lieu of parkland just because right now, we don't have a lot of money to put towards our development, but I think that might be turning around. So when we have, if we're parkland heavy and money short, then we start, we need to take that money. So we can save that up to be able to do some more capital projects. They also provide general policy guidance on the matters of the Parks Trails and Open Space planning and then of course, reviewing the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan. I don't know that the Park and Rec Advisory Board currently will oversee the Woodland Aquatic Center. Of course, the Parks and Recreation Department does do that. I think those are still discussions that are in process that maybe we need to create a Woodland Aquatic Center Board as well and have the two working together with two different roles of duties.
Thank you.
Sure? Any other questions? Oh, one other thing I would like to say that my board has very clearly stated to me that they're disappointed that they don't have a council liaison. So tonight, when you guys are discussing your committees, they would very much welcome any of you to come to our park board members and be our liaison. We meet the second Wednesday of each month at 6:30 PM right here in City Hall.
Thank you. Okay, thanks Cindy. Thank you very much.
Give you that opportunity to brag a little bit.
I'm sorry?
I wanted to give you that opportunity to brag a little bit.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, we have two candidates for four positions who have a motion to approve both. So move. And the second, Suzanne.
Thank you. Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. If I may, I can swear Mr. Carlson in this evening.
Let's do that.
Okay. Bob, would you like to join me up at the podium? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bob Carlson, solemnly swear that it will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Colorado, charter and ordinance to the city of Woodland Park, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board upon which I am about to enter. No. It's a present. Thanks, Bob. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we're gonna move on to a great introduction of Officer Rico. Officer Bradley's in the back. Are you gonna handle this?
Yes, sir.
Chief will handle this. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, for about the last six months, we've been working pretty hard to bring a K-9 program to our department. Just last Saturday, the Homes for Heroes Project raised $23,000 so that each K-9 within Teller County and El Paso County will get about a $1,000 stipend to help take care of their dog's health care. We've been able to accomplish the goal of bringing a trained K-9 team on tonight and I'll let Officer Bradley introduce himself and his dog and talk a little bit about what they are able to do.
Absolutely. Is Rico okay?
Good evening. Hello? Good evening. My name's Tim Bradley. This is Rico. And a little bit about Rico, he's a seven-year-old, near eight-year-old Belgian Malinois German Shepherd cross. We bred his parents intentionally to try and get this dog. Fortunately, he's come out with, as you can see, the German Shepherd ears and the German Shepherd brain. So he has been a certified police K-9 since 2012. We hold two different organization certifications, both national. We hold USPCA and NPCA. Both of those organizations, their training standards have been approved and backed by the US Supreme Court, which is very important when you choose a certification, if you will, or organization to become certified with. So he is certified both in detector and tracking and he's also certified in patrol tactics. So he does a number of things. This dog currently has six different odors that he will alert on and indicate as far as narcotics. He will track. We do train our dogs to both track for suspect tracks and for non-suspect tracks. We mix that up. We like them to understand that we want them to track. And if we tell them that there's a suspect at the end of the track, then they can react accordingly, but we don't want that to be an assumption in the event that we have somebody that's wandered off or a child that's missing. We wanna be able to make sure that we can locate that person hopefully successfully without incident.
Excuse me, officer, could you do me a favor so they can see as well as us move off to the side? There you go. That's perfect.
So as you can tell with this dog, he's all about the attention. He loves an audience. He loves his picture taken. He, every time the applause occurred tonight, his ears perked up, he probably thought that was for him. That's just kinda how he is. We've basically supplied the K-9 calls for Woodland Park for about the last five years. We've been in the schools multiple times. We've been called out to the street on traffic stops. We've also covered calls for Teller County, El Paso County. We've pretty much worked wherever we've been asked to go. I've lived in Woodland Park since 2011, so it's been convenient and very close for me in the event that Woodland Park Police Department needed a K-9. Rico is the 2015, 2016, and 2017 regional top dog champion. We're hoping to get a fourth title in 2018. That's gonna happen in August. And if you're not aware of it, we did get approved by the USPCA to hold the detector and tracking trials here in Woodland Park in the next April. So we've got at least 18 teams currently, probably more, that are looking forward to coming to Woodland Park for that weekend. So if, I think I've pretty well covered Rico. Is there any questions from the board that I can answer about this dog? Yes, ma'am.
Can I take his picture?
Sure. Are you taking it with that?
Yeah. He's, I'm a dog freak, so I have to...
Okay, well, he's all about that, so you'll be fine.
So officer, give me, I got a couple of questions. One, what kind of investment do we have in a dog like this?
The investment at this point is pretty much all mine. I came in with a finished dog as an experienced handler and a K-9 trainer. Right now, we've modified my patrol car, the one that's assigned to me slightly, to serve as a temporary K-9 unit. And that has been set up in the manner that when we're able to obtain a car and we have a number of people offering up equipment, I just acquired a K-9 kennel insert this weekend from another sheriff's department. So once we put that together, the vehicle that I have and driving currently can be put back into a regular patrol condition in probably an hour. Nothing permanent there. And I think that total cost was about $110 to convert that car.
And you've been in law enforcement a long time. How long have you worked personally with dogs?
I grew up with my uncle who was a K-9 handler, so I was exposed to that as a young age. He is my second dog. If the ultrasound's good, which I'll know this week, then I'll be starting one of his pups in July. I'm hoping I can get another four years out of him at his age if his health holds up, but they don't last forever. They take a lot of abuse and punishment through the training over the years. Right now, the vet says he's very healthy, so looking, when he's retiring, to maybe bring in a dog that's seasoned at that time to take his place.
Counsel, any other questions?
Very handsome.
What is his work schedule? Exactly the same as yours?
It is. And at this point, since we've gone active with Woodland Park Police Department as the sole K-9 unit at this point, we're on call 24/7.
Wow.
Carol?
If the police department were to purchase a dog, what would the cost be?
The average dogs that I'm seeing coming in at 18 months with basic obedience, basic things, are about $10,000 to $15,000. Finished dogs, you're looking at double to triple that depending on the kinda dog, once they're active on the street, certified, etc.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks very much. Appreciate you being here. Thanks, Rico.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on. We have no additions, deletions, or corrections. And move on to the consent calendar, Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, we have two sets of minutes to approve. We have the minutes from the April 19th regular council meeting and we have the minutes from the April 24th special council meeting. I have two corrections that have been brought to my attention on the April 19th minutes, so I'd like them to be approved with these corrections. On page three of your minutes, the Vogels were here and I, the last meeting, I had them speaking in opposition of the building code and they actually spoke in favor, so that was my mistake. And then also on page four, we had John Schaefer making a second and he wasn't even, he was gone by then. So I have to listen to the tape and figure out who made that second.
Great. Questions, council? Val?
Maybe we get an updated copy once the changes are made?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve this consent calendar. As amended, thank you.
Thank you. On the second.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. We move on to unfinished business and we'll let you keep the microphone, Suzanne.
Okay, thank you. As council will recall, two weeks ago, when the new council was sworn in, we gave council time to review the boards and committees that we have open and available to allow them time to get to know what the boards and committees do, when the meetings are, and to see which ones they would be interested in participating in. In front of council, you should each have a list like this that shows every board and committee, when they meet, who the current council liaisons are, etc. There's two things I'd like to add to this list. If you go down to the CML Policy Committee, Councilwoman Harvey is currently our person for that, but our alternate currently is council member Carr, Mayor Protem Carr. And then if you go down to Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, Mayor Levy is currently our liaison for that one and our alternate is council member Sawyer. So this basically is just a discussion council has and you decide who would like to be on the different various boards and committees.
Thank you, Suzanne. You all have your list there. Noel's got his hand up. One second. I just wanna know if there's, if there's anyone that's a council liaison now, and I'm gonna turn it over to Val in a minute, if you would like to step down from that position, this would be the obvious time to do that so we know which ones are open. Let me just start with Val and go to you, Noel.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've enjoyed being on Main Street for almost a year. They're transitioning into a real active viable board with a lot of good missions. I'm gonna step down and nominate Paul Sonnier to step into that role if he'd like. I'm interested in keep Woodland Park beautiful and we'll get to that point, but I've enjoyed my time with Main Street, but I think it's useful for somebody else to get acquainted with them and I recommend Paul Sonnier if he's willing. Counsel is willing.
Paul, thoughts on that?
Council liaison for me.
I don't think we need to vote, is everybody agreeing? I mean, we'll come to consensus for sure. Everybody good with that? Yes, yes, yes. Okay? That's good. Paul, you're in. Noel, what do you have, sir?
I've been on DDA for three years. It's been a good run with Kelly's expertise and knowledge of finance and she was involved in the financing when DDA was even formed. I'd like to step down and recommend Kelly for that position.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
You like that idea, Ms. Case?
I would be honored.
You'd be a great addition.
Thank you. Very much.
Everyone agree?
Yes.
Two down. Okay, Cindy just talked about Park and Rec Advisory Board. Who's been motivated to be part of that as council liaison?
Noel? I'll take that.
Sweet. Anybody else? Everyone good with Noel? Cindy, you all right? Well, she left. Maybe she's not okay. Okay, I'm going down my list. Board of Adjustment, Board of Review. Going down my list, Board of Adjustment, Board of View, doesn't matter. Community Advisory, doesn't.
We have the CML Policy Committee, Mayor.
CML Policy Committee. We have Carol Harvey right now.
I can continue doing that unless someone's got a burning desire to drive to Denver every couple of weeks or months or whatever it is.
And you've done that well.
I am curious. I'm curious. What it's like.
Would you like to be the alternate?
I'll be the alternate. How about that? Yeah, let me be the alternate.
I guess I'm out.
Well, you're not. We can, alternate is just that. It's almost.
Yeah, let me just be the alternate.
Carol does.
Carol makes it almost all the time.
Yeah, so I don't have to worry about.
We good with Noel on alternate for CML Policy? Okay. Community Investment, Val, you in the state?
Yeah.
Okay. We got Kelly, Historical Preservation. Carol, you're good?
Yes. That is, that's my favorite.
That's your favorite committee. Okay, we gotta replace Kenny with Keep Woodland Park Beautiful.
I think Val just mentioned he would like to do that.
Is everyone good with Val?
Yes.
That's a nice change for you, Val.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. We got Paul on Main Street, Park and Rec Board. Noel Personnel Board, we don't need. I'd like to stay on as PPACG, seeing as though I'm on the executive board. I think we get some benefit there, and Noel is currently the alternate, unless you'd like to step away from that.
I've never been, except so I, it's regard, if you're, whoever's the alternate, you'll never go anyways, so whoever wants to be the alternate.
I don't think I've missed in four years, so it's one of my favorite things.
Yeah, so it's kinda pointless.
I have came down and had experience.
There we go. It's all you. Okay.
Okay.
I do wanna say that I know Hillary would like to be on Utilities, and I would actually like to be on Utilities too, if that's okay with you. So, would that work out?
We have two. We have one and one alternate. Is that right? We have two.
Yeah, you have two on that one.
Okay. Hillary, you good with that?
Yes.
So, Hillary and Noel for UAC. Does that mean Paul's stepping down?
Yeah, Paul's going to.
Paul's stepping down and going to BPACG and Main Street.
Sure.
Hillary and Noel.
Done.
Oh, my goodness. Nice job.
Mayor Levy, for the record, may I just?
Please.
And, and just as a matter of procedure, I, I do recall that state statute requires that with regard to the DDA board member, I think that you do that by a formal appointment, by motion, so whereas the others can be accomplished through the consensus here tonight, I would ask that counsel do in a formal motion to appoint Councilmember Case to the DDA. That's my recollection on how the statute is set up.
I'll go ahead and do that.
I'll second that. Suzanne?
We never, oh, did you make the motion?
I thought you just said you were.
I, I must've said it so quick, I didn't even hear myself say it.
Okay. Would you like to make that motion?
Motion to put Councilwoman Case on DDA as our liaison and voting member.
Thank you, and I will second that. Suzanne?
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel, thank you very much. That was easy. Okay. Unfinished business, we'll move on. Mr. McClung with Bad Rock Automotive. Mac, I know you have a presentation. We usually keep this to about five minutes. What do you have in mind?
I just wanted to see how y'all wanted to proceed.
We won't have any discussion tonight. If you would like to make comment, you certainly can. Do you think five minutes is enough? Do you need more? I'm sorry?
Five minutes would be plenty.
Great. Go right ahead. The floor is yours.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to begin by apologizing that this has gone as far as it has. I've attempted many times to forego this, but after informing both, excuse me, the city manager and head of the planning department of the law, the federal law that they were breaking, I was instructed to have my attorney address this with the city's attorney, so I knew no other way of doing this. I have contacted the city council members, other than the two new ladies, individually to try to avoid a public display, and only to find out that the city attorney had asked them not to speak with me off the record. So, I am asking the city of Woodland Park to, one, remove the requirement for installing sidewalk, curb, and gutter on the city's property, frontage of my property, and refund the $13,000 extorted from me twelve years ago when I built the building, and reimburse the attorney's fees brought on thus far.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We won't, since this isn't litigation, we will not discuss it tonight, but we appreciate you coming forward.
For arguing numbers, I have a email from this afternoon from my attorney's secretary. The attorney's fees thus far, which will go up exponentially, is $24,193.26. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Executive session.
There is no need for executive. There is no need for executive session, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. I have a short item to present here, and that is just to remind counsel that a special meeting has been scheduled for May fifteenth. At this time, no action items are anticipated to be on that agenda. Rather, counsel will be meeting with Josh Jones, who is the consultant in executive session.
We set that for six.
Six o'clock.
Thank you, Suzanne.
And just for everyone's, six PM.
Yes, ma'am.
For everyone's information, the HR group is gonna take the hundred and some applications and, and bring that down to around number, about ten, and that's where we will pick up the process, starting on the fifteenth of May. Just so everybody knows, we're working hard to accomplish what we think is one of the most important things that we will do this coming year, and, and this whole council is working hard together, I'll underline together, in, in getting this done. So, I'm, I'm happy with the process so far. I think everybody else is, and we're moving forward positively. So, just so everybody understands where we're at in the process. Okay, we move on to Mike Farina and number six D.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. As you may recall, the city, you budgeted $30,000 for the Main Street, well, Woodland Park Main Street, 501(c)(3). To date, $12,000 has been already paid to the organization. They presented their quarter, first quarter report to city council at the last meeting, and in that, they requested the balance of the $30,000 to be paid to them, seeking counsel's desire.
Counsel?
I would move to approve releasing of the $18,000 to Main Street.
I'll second. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Counsel, I missed, but I saw it on video, the presentation from two weeks ago. Was everybody satisfied with that and where, where Main Street's going, their vision, their, their mode of, of operation, all those kinds of things? Was it clear? Do we have any questions about that?
The only discussion point I would make is, it was a very, Stephanie particularly did a really good presentation. I'm, I'm opposed to using any part of that money for payment of the director, but I will support releasing the money.
And when there's, was there an indication, Mike, as to what that money would be used for, or is it, it's open to them? Is that correct? We didn't stipulate?
Uh, no.
Okay. That's what I thought.
They did present their question to questions. It seemed appropriate, and they had. Very good conversation. They put out a magazine promoting the park.
There you go.
Magazine, I, I thought that they.
It's great. It's great. Noel?
I'm, I'm for giving them the $18,000. I believe they're just getting started. They've only had four months. Summer is when they start to do all their work, and that's when we're gonna start to see some results. So, I think we've promised them to do the present, we promised them the money if they came to us with a good presentation showing where the funds went, and they did that. So, I truly believe that they will continue to do good work in this community, and the $18,000 will help them.
Anybody else? Suzanne?
I'm sorry, I thought we had a motion.
We had a motion already. Paul seconded.
Thank you.
Paul seconded.
Thank you very much. LeVar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Suzanne, I'm sorry. We'll move on to public hearings. And Sally Riley. She run off. There she is. Talking to Mac. The Max.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council members. This is ordinance thirteen twenty-one, adopting the building code of 2017, and this was a continuance from April nineteenth, two weeks ago, when we introduced this ordinance. And since that time, the staff and contractors have had some discussion, and we are proposing a redlined copy of ordinance thirteen twenty-one. However, you asked for Mac Mcgiver to provide a comparison of the 2009 and the 2015 International Conservation Energy Code. He is prepared to share with you some slides about the energy code, so I will turn it over to Mac, and he can go through his presentation quickly, and then we will be happy to discuss the two additions of relief that we have added to this ordinance for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Mac, if you'll explain as well as you can and expedite as well as you can.
I'll do my best on both, sir.
Thank you.
That was self-explanatory. So, just to let you know, energy codes are nothing new. Those of you that are sixty years old and older, remember what happened in October of 1973. We had a thing called the Arab Oil Embargo. You stood in line to get five gallons of gasoline, and if you needed more than that, you got back in line again. And several of the United, of the States, in the United States, appealed to the feds to say, hey, we've gotta do something about our energy consumption, and that drove a whole host of energy conservation measures, from gasoline standards on cars in terms of miles per gallon, eventually light bulbs, and how energy efficient homes and office buildings were. And you can see here, there's been a whole bunch of them, and the information actually extends beyond the right of this with the 2012 and 2015 International Energy Conservation Codes. Energy codes address three areas. The thermal envelope of the building by increasing resistance to heat flow, infiltration, that's air exchange with the outside, you don't wanna heat your neighbor, and energy efficiency on our appliances. One of the most, maybe hard ones for you to accept over the year, last few years, we had to get away from incandescent bulbs and go to either compact fluorescents or LEDs. So, these are driven, or have been driven mainly at the federal level, starting back in 1975. That was the first one. Gerald Ford directed what was then the National Institute of Standards and Technology, now ANSI, American National Standards Institute, to develop some test procedures, and this was further amended under George Bush with the Energy Policy Act of ninety-two, and further amended in 2005 with his son as president, and all the way up to 2007, and this was when George Bush signed in the law that we had to get rid of incandescent bulbs. That was the biggest one on that. You look at your appliances now, they're all energy star rating. That's table stakes for appliances. So, the 2009 IEC, that's what everybody's been building under for several years. And the best analogy I can draw at a high level between this two, these two codes, the 2009 IECC isn't bad, but it did have some gaps that allowed energy to escape from a building, energy that you pay for. Here's the 2015, quite a bit better. All the gaps are pretty much taken care of. There's not many places energy can escape now with the 2015. Some key definitions that I'll be referring to on subsequent charts, thermal envelope, that's the enclosure where you wanna keep it heated, or for a few people up here, cooled, but mainly heated. So, that's your windows, doors, floors, ceilings, and walls. We are in Climate Zone 5B. B stands for dry. Steamboat is Climate Zone 7. You go out on the plains, you get on Climate Zone 4. Colorado Springs is Climate Zone 5 as well. You hear about a term called R-value. We probably all used it. Some of us know the long definition of it, but basically, it's a measure of thermal resistance. The higher the R-value, the better things are to keep heat in. U-factor, thermal transmit, sometimes called thermal conductance, that's the inverse of that. And I have a couple of examples. If we're R-49, which is the new ceiling insulation standard, that has a U-value of 0.0204. Or if I have a window, that's U.35, which will be under and have been under, that's an R.2.857. And as you can see, windows are the Achilles' heel of any building. So, this is a busy chart, but it shows the difference between two key tables in the 2009 and the 2015 codexes. These are the insulation. There's not many places energy can escape now with the 2015. Some key definitions that I'll be referring to on subsequent charts, thermal envelope. That's the enclosure where you wanna keep it heated. Or for a few people up here, cooled. But mainly heated. So, that's your windows, doors, floors, ceilings, and walls. We are in Climate Zone 5B. B stands for dry. Steamboat is Climate Zone 7. You go out on the plains, you get on Climate Zone 4. Colorado Springs is Climate Zone 5 as well. You hear about a term called R-value. We probably all used it. Some of us know the long definition of it, but basically, it's a measure of thermal resistance. The higher the R-value, the better things are to keep heat in. U-factor, thermal transmitance, sometimes called thermal conductance. That's the inverse of that. And I have a couple of examples. If we're R-49, which is the new ceiling insulation standard, that has a U-value of 0.0204. Or if I have a window, that's U.35, which will be under and have been under, that's an R.2.857. And as you can see, windows are the Achilles' heel of any building. So, this is a busy chart, but it shows the difference between two key tables in the 2009 and the 2015 codebooks. These are the insulation and fenestration. Fenestration is a fancy word for a window. And as you look at that, I'll just save some time here. If you go almost to the bottom, you'll see PPRBD 2017. They have reverted back to the 2009 R-value for basement walls. And if you look at the bottom line on that chart, in the table, amended for Woodland Park, we get to keep the windows at 0.35. Because it's hard, not impossible, but it's more expensive and hard to find all the glass in a house, your sliding patio door, stuff like that, at 0.32 or lower. So, we were able to negotiate 0.35. And if you meet everything on this table, that's called the prescriptive compliance. And you don't have to do anything else. Just show proof that when you build, you met this table, which is R-402.1.2 for 2015, and you're done. Some of the changes. Ceilings with attic spaces. It used to be R-38 in 2009, 2015. That's moved up to R-49 with a couple of exceptions that are applicable to both. If you can get R-30 all the way over the top plate, so on your outside wall, you have a 2-by-4, 2-by-6, that's your top plate. And if you can get enough insulation on that to be R-30 under 2009, you met the compliance requirement. Under 2015, that's moved up to R-38, and that counts as meeting R-49 all the way across. What we had before was cold spots at that joint. And I've got an example there showing standard rafter and insulation with tapered insulation depth and what's called an energy truss or raised heel truss. And that gives you full height insulation all the way out to your limit of your exterior wall. So, you don't have that cold spot. Another change for insulation had to be in contact with the underside of the subfloor. It's a relaxation of that now in 2015. It has to be in contact with the top side of the sheathing that might be, say, drywall on the bottom of that floor truss, that floor joist. Doesn't have to be in contact with the subfloor. You can have a gap there. And that makes it easier to install. Air barrier and insulation requirement on... There's a full-page table in the 2015 codebook. And three important changes there. The junction of the top plate and the top of the exterior wall has to be sealed. So, they have to run a bead of caulk there now because of letting air out. Cavities within corners and headers of frame walls shall be insulated to R3 minimum. Corners, just like at the intersection of the wall and the ceiling, have historically been a noted cold spot. So, this gives you some insulation there now. And if you have sprinklers, you follow what the manufacturer says. This requirement has... can still be done by builders. It's not a hard requirement anymore. It's their option. It's not mandatory. But it's a blower door test. So, in 2009, you could have seven air changes per hour at a pressure of 50 pascals. What's a pascal? That is one... Make sure I say this right. That's one pound per square inch, or one pound of force on a square foot. So, that's not much pressure. That's the same pressure you get if you were sucking water or liquid up a straw, and it moves up two tenths of an inch. That's 50 pascals. 2015 did have in it, or still has in it, but it's not mandatory anymore. Mandatory blower door testing, and that's optional now for the builder. And you get a lot of things when you do a blower door test. You find out where your leaks are. You find out what your infiltration actually is. And if you can prove it's below, or when you get that number, you plug it into what's called manual J. We'll talk about that more later. You can reduce the size of your furnace or boiler. If I had done that on my house earlier, I would've gone from 105,000 BTU boiler to an 80,000 BTU boiler. But I did it too late. I already had the boiler installed. What is a blower door? Blower door test. Here's the picture. And there are three companies in the United States that make these. I don't have stock in any of them. 12 years ago, these were 8,000 bucks. Today, they're around between $2,500 and $3,500. What can you catch with a blower door or infrared thermography? Here's a leak of a can light in a ceiling. So, if you look at it from the bottom, it looks fine. If you look at it, the picture on the right, you see all that nice white blown-in insulation. Looks fine. But it's leaking heat out that you're paying for. And you can catch this with a blower door. You can catch it with an infrared camera. Continuing, we only have a couple left on this. So, one of the big changes for 2015 is if you have a furnace or a boiler, when it runs, where does the combustion air for that come from? Typically, they're in the center of your house. And they're sucking air. If it's minus 20 outside, they're bringing minus 20 air in to burn. And you've gotta reheat that heat loss. So, under 2015, the room that that boiler or furnace is in has to be either separated from the thermal envelope of the house that you're trying to heat, or you go with a high-efficiency appliance, 90% or better. And the supply air and the combustion air going out are in sealed ducts. So, you're not drawing outside air in through the whole house to run your furnace or boiler. One exception on this. Direct vent appliances with both intake and exhaust pipes, as I just said, are exempted. And RBD, in their codebook, the 2017 codebook, has an exception for fuel-burning appliances equipped with a listed power vent. Duck leakage, especially if you have ducks in the attic. Ducks are notoriously leaky. And they tightened up a bit in 2015 to go from six cubic feet per minute for rough intake and from eight cubic feet per minute to four for finish. The drainwater heat recovery unit requirement in the 2015 IECC was deleted. We negotiated that out with Regional. Thanks again. And equipment sizing. In general, what HVAC guys do is they oversize the furnace or the boiler. They undersize the ducts if it's a furnace. And you end up paying for that. When you buy a car, rarely do you buy the biggest engine made for it that fits in that... under the hood. So, they're requiring now that you do first a manual J. ACCA is the American Con... Air Conditioning Contractors of America. And they've come up with several manuals to standardize sizing of heating appliances and cooling. Manual J gives you your heat load and BTU per hour. Manual S sizes what you need. So, you don't wanna put in 150,000 BTU furnace if all you need is 125 or 100. So, manual S and J enforce that. And one of the things you get in 2015, you'll see this shortly, you get a completely new... Actually, two new methods for showing compliance with the 2015 code. So, you've got six methods now versus four. In Woodland Park, the majority of the homes built in the last few years under Regional, about 80% use the prescriptive method. We talked about that in that busy chart earlier. About 20% use a free software tool called ResCheck. And this is developed and maintained by the Department of Energy. It's available for downloads to PCs, or you can do web-based for either PCs or Macs. And log homes can be put into compliance by meeting the requirements of ICC 400. So, here's an example of the top part of the Regional Building Department Energy Conservation Code Insulation Certificate for 2015. And if you look over there on the right, you see Items 5 and 6. These are the two new methods you get. So, ResCheck is free, easy to use. Here's an example of a compliance certificate done with ResCheck. You see in red, that's what RBD checks of our. They check for pass/fail. Okay. Any questions from anybody?
Counsel, you wanna start, or should we start with the audience? Let's start with the audience. We've got a couple people that want us to speak. Mac thinks...
You're welcome.
Do you have something now, Sally?
Well, I just felt it might be helpful for you to understand the two additions in the red line before the audience, and if John Welton can come up and say a few words as to these new amendments to the International Energy Conservation Code.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, John Welton, with the Regional Building Department. I'll try and make my explanation as brief as possible so that you can get to the public comment. The two additional amendments that have been added to this ordinance that you'll see in the red lines was a result of our staff with the Regional Building Department working directly with the input of industry from Woodland Park. The first is another amendment to the prescriptive table. This is gonna be the prescriptive requirement for R-value in wall cavities. We have left that exactly the way our previous amendment read in the 2009 code to allow R-19 in the wall cavity or a R-15 in the wall cavity with an R2 continuous insulation on the outside of the building. The R2 continuous can be omitted as long as the building does have a full structural sheathing package around it. So, basically, the exact same construction technique that is being used right now, which is OSB around the outside of the building. This gets industry away from pretty much a mandatory requirement, if you will, of having to do blown insulation in the walls. This still gives them the ability to use bat insulation. The other amendment, which was probably the one of most discussion, was the blower door test. We haven't amended the blower door test out because the last thing we wanna do is take away an option. The whole point of our code amendments are to try and increase options to the builders. So, what we did with the second additional amendment is we changed a mandatory air leakage requirement from having to comply with both the installation requirement and the blower door test to now it comply with four. So, it either has to follow through with the current path that is in place under the 2009 codes right now, which is a visual inspection of the R-values that were designed in the plan set, and an air barrier inspection by our inspection staff, which is the exact process we have in place. Or they can, if they so choose, do the blower door test. So, there could be some builders that want that option. So, this doesn't delete that option for them. It gives an additional option to the builders that weren't keen on doing the blower door test.
Thank you very much. You bet. Okay. I've got a couple that have signed up in this regard. Let's start with Jane Butterfield. Ms. Butterfield, if you'd just give us your name and address, please. We'd appreciate it.
Jane Butterfield. And I'm at 1182 Tarmigan Drive, Woodland Park. When, in my younger years, there was a study done with the houses were so tight that they found that the pollution inside the houses was greater than what was outside the houses. And I... My home is an MBI, built home. It's... I've been in it for a year and a half. And last year, during the coldest months, my 2,000-square-foot home cost us $107. And I have gas heat, gas hot water, and gas fireplace, which we use a lot. And I also keep four windows open. And not just because I'm a outside, you know, fresh air freak, but my home is borderline radon high. And so, therefore, I keep my windows open to keep that level down. And my concern is the tighter we get these homes, not only is the air pollution from, say, carpets and just building materials is going to build up in the home, but we have a radon issue in Colorado. And a pretty big one. Because we have a lot of decomposing granite. Also, my concern is, is there... It seems to be, in the planning department, a lot of concern about building affordable homes and trailer homes and mini homes and, you know, trying to get affordability for people. And it keep adding more and more codes in tighter and tighter buildings. It's... Only the wealthier people are gonna be able to afford that. And my question is, is, you know, how... How much money can we afford to be packing into our homes to get it tighter and tighter when that itself becomes a health issue? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Carl Anderson?
Good afternoon, evening. Carl Anderson, 602 County Road 511. I will not bore you with a bunch of charts and all the rest of that stuff. We've seen enough of that tonight. Make this quick. I took up this fight against the 2015 Energy Code because of cost that was gonna increase the cost of housing here. When I started that, I was told by several people in my industry and stuff, I was wasting my time, that there would be no agreements able to become with the RBD. I have been since then in contact with them on several occasions. And the result of that, you'll see from me and others' help here, is the three additional amendments to this code. And I think those three additional amendments will see a cost savings of several thousand dollars to consumers in the City of Woodland Park. So, I think I've achieved that goal here with what I've done. And I wanna applaud RBD there in the back for meeting with me and Sally Riley and discussing my concerns. And I think the way they've changed this is acceptable. And really, now it's up to you and listen to the other people here in the audience if what they have to say. But I think we've written out several items that were strictly a high-cost, low-return parts of that code. So, I'm happy with what's happened here so far. And I appreciate your guys' support and the extra time that was given for us all to meet. By giving us another two weeks to work together, we, you know, came up with these agreements. And I appreciate the work everybody's done. So, thank you, counsel. Any questions before I step away?
That's great. Thank you very much.
Good deal.
Okay, anybody else like to comment? Counsel, it sounds like we've got a great process here. We weren't happy with what the original was. We made some adjustments that apparently aren't gonna make everybody happy, but make the majority happy. And unless we have any other conversation or questions...
The only question I had is, anyone from RBD or Mac, are you able to respond to the question about radon?
So, I've done radon mitigation.
Mac?
Thank you.
I've done radon mitigation training when we lived in Atlanta, Georgia, because we had decomposed granite issues there as well. I'm not going to dismiss radon, but I've never been able to get any data from CDC as to the number that has been used for years of 22,000 deaths a year from radon. I've never seen a single instance of a death certificate that says that. Is a radioactive gas in your house a good thing? I'd say no. But in Canada, where the life expectancy is slightly above that of Americans, their standard is 10 picocuries per liter. Our standard is four picocuries per liter. I've done work in Winnipeg, Manitoba, where if they enforce this, nobody would have a home to live in. And they're some of the longest-living countries in the world. And they're some of the longest living Canadians of all. So I'm not saying radioactive gas is to be dismissed, but I don't know what the real number is to be concerned about. And personally, having had four deaths in my family from lung cancer from smoking, I've looked at every possible cause for lung cancer and I don't see radon on any death certificate.
That's great. Thank you MAC. Any other questions?
And maybe Suzanne can talk about this. When we, when we lost the contract, or no, I'm sorry Sally would talk about this. When we lost the contract initially when we went to the 2009 codes, are we, if we stick with the 2009 codes, are we going to be in a sticky situation with Regional on keeping a contract with them to do our permitting?
This is proposing to go with the 2015 codes.
Right, right.
With the four amendments.
So if we don't go with them, are we gonna, you think Regional, Pike's Peak Regional would stay with us?
If you adopt what's presented tonight, we are in good shape with Pike's Peak Regional.
That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
Well, yeah, because if we don't go.
I would just like to ask.
While they drop us.
Let me think for a second. I would like to understand how, I know that the county has adopted and excluded the energy portion of the update to 2015. Am I correct in that assumption?
The county has chosen to stay with the 2009 across the board.
Across the board, okay. So with that, if the city, if we, if we accept this tonight, does that cause some confusion or some irregularities in between? Because we are a part of the county, although we regulate our own building code now with Regional Building Department. Does that cause any?
No miscase.
For the builders or contractors?
Whenever a builder is planning to do their project within whatever jurisdiction they're in, they're going to come to us directly. If they're in the city limits, they'll go to the county directly and it is their responsibility to understand and that is usually one of their first questions. What codes are you operating under? And they even have to put that on their site plans, on their materials that are turned in. So they're very much aware of which code they are operating or building to.
That doesn't, that's not cumbersome for them?
No, it is not.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me. I did not know the changes before coming here tonight. I do want to thank MAC. He's done a great job at this. He explains it. I understand it. It is a very, very technical process to follow and there's a lot of moving parts here. And John, we're meeting with our contractors and given these variances on these exterior walls, insulations, it's, it's a great concession to keep the cost of a home in line. I have to say, I'm very pleased with what I've heard tonight. And so.
Want to make a motion Paul?
I want to hear what the rest of council has to say. I didn't know what I was walking into. Now I hear there are changes and I don't want to override anyone in this, but I'm pleased with what I heard and I appreciate all the hard work that has gone towards this.
I guess I would have one more question. And I would, we've heard from one contractor and I know we probably have, I see one more in the room. I just would like to feel that all or more than just one has some input and they're comfortable with the changes as well.
Not from there. Please do. Understand Kelly already, there's four communities that have approved including El Paso County.
Yes.
Approved the 2015.
Thank you.
Skip Howes, President Scott Holmes Limited, 300 Sunning Gun Court, Woodland Park. How many of you when you go to look and buy a car, read the little sign on the side that says miles per gallon? Does that have an impact on you when you look at that car? Not at all? I know the Ferrari doesn't matter. If you can afford the Ferrari, you just go with it, right? But the reason why I say that is some of the things that we're doing and, and the work that Regional has done with the contractors gives the consumer the opportunity to really understand how their house is going to perform. The blower door, the blower duct blaster test says, hey, the heat's going to go from the furnace to this duct in accordance with the design that was performed by the mechanical contractor and submitted to Regional for their review and approval. So it's that checks and balance. It's not, if there's a big hole in the side and the air goes out into a joist space, it doesn't get to the room that needs to be done. So that's a good test to ensure to the consumer that the heat's going to go where it's supposed to go. The blower door test as a performance methodology is the same thing. It tells you how, how your house leaks. You don't have to do it, but you can do it. We've been doing blower door tests since 2000 and started doing performance homes in 19, in 2003. So what we find in the, in the people we're dealing with, and not everybody wants this information, but they want to know what's the miles per gallon rating of the house. Well, if you do a duct blaster test and a blower door test and a few more other tests that you run through the Home Energy Rating System or a HERS system, you can get a rating for the house that gives it its miles per gallon. And back in the early 2000s, there were federal loans that if your HERS rating made a certain level or greater, you got a lower rate loan from, on a Fannie or Freddie type loan. Unfortunately, those loans are gone right now, but if we all lobby to our legislators at the federal level, they might bring it back as an incentive. It's about, the Energy Code is really about house performance and energy efficiency. You know, if, if you put some money into a house, $3,000, $5,000, $7,000 more and can produce an energy efficiency that would save the homeowner $50,000, $60,000, $75 a month, at our current interest rates, that buys $12,000 to $15,000 more house for the same payment. So, you know, what we have here are options that allow builders to go prescriptive or what we do a lot is the performance path. We like to give our owners that certificate that says on the HERS rating, a code compliant house would be rated at 100. Anything better than that is more efficient. So a 90 HERS rating would be 10% more efficient. We did two houses in the last couple of years. One had a HERS of 52 and one had a HERS of 48. Our owners love the low utility bills. And that takes care of with regards to the comment about stale air. The concept today is build them tight and ventilate them right with ashtray 62 and air changes that they're talking about. The air circulates in the house. You don't have to keep your windows open in the winter time. The fan that's supposed to be running to turn that, that air change on a regular basis is going to do it for you. But if it makes you feel good, no problem. You know, that's your choice. In this country, we can open or not open a window. That's why we make them operable. So I think you've got a great product. I think it's going to meet the needs of the builder. I think it's going to meet the needs of the community and I think it's going to meet the needs of the consumers and it's going to give us options for those of us that want to build performance homes or at least offer those options to those consumers for them to say, yeah, I'm willing to spend $3,000 or $5,000 or $5,000 more and have a lower utility. Makes sense?
Thank you very much.
Yes ma'am?
You're talking about options. As a builder, does the government have to regulate you in order to use this as an option?
Well, there's some of us that would really like to have no speed limit signs out on the highway, you know, because we like to drive fast and, and have fun in vehicles. But, you know, I think there are certain health and safety things. The issue that comes with the Energy Code is it's about conservation. What is the most valuable resource this community has? Water. So every ounce of water we serve makes this community grow longer and, grow bigger and have businesses come here. Tip and I have had great opportunity conversations about the water conserving through the EPA where there are 30% greater fixtures and I'm trying to prod him to give us credit for those. We're working on that.
Well, I appreciate that, but I'm not asking about water. I'm asking about government regulating our grass and home. Do you think that builders are capable of doing that without the regulations and requirements of government? They have the options currently, don't they? Or do they need the regulations in place in order to fulfill that?
Well, the codes give a constant that the consumer can rely on. Without checks and balances in place, all you have is a good reputation or a bad reputation.
So the market wouldn't regulate that?
The market could regulate it and I know we've had some builders in this community that have been around for a while and did some shoddy stuff and left and who'd they leave holding in the back? The homeowner.
But they weren't, they left town because the market regulated them. They could no longer be in business, right?
Pretty much. And the poor homeowners that spent the $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 living in that piece of...
Right. But it was the homeowner's choice to go with that building, wasn't it?
You bet. Exactly right. Sometimes price gets you what you deserve.
Right. So the homeowner would have an option to have those...
Sure, they can price shop and, you know, home building is a kind of a technical issue.
Sure.
They rely on us a lot to walk them through the process.
Exactly. They rely on you, but they don't have to rely on the government to have those, that those insulation efficiencies put into place.
No, but I think it might give them a peace of mind that they know that some third party has not guaranteed, but has oversaw that certain minimum standards are going to be met.
Well, we have those minimum standards in the 2009 regulations, don't we?
Yeah. And, but we also have the 2003 code and the 97 code and the 2000, and all of that. And I've been building since the 73 code, so they change. Technology change. We don't build them like we used to. Thank God we don't. We build them better.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel, we've had a lot of discussion. I'd like to hear a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 30, or 1321 as amended.
Second. Thank you Suzanne.
Sawyer?
Wow. I know technology changes. You're not asking me that. You're asking me for my vote. I like what I hear.
We need to move forward. Yes.
Har?
No.
Keith?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
No.
Levy?
Yes.
Motion carries five, two.
Thank you Suzanne. Okay, we'll move on to approving ordinance 1325. Are we going to take these separately Sally?
Mayor Levy, if I just might say some acknowledgement to MAC, the work that he put into this effort and that we are so fortunate to have a volunteer on our Board of Review who is an engineer and is so knowledgeable in this area to help us with these types of decisions. And then I'd also like to publicly thank Regional Building Department. They are terrific partners for us and very professional and we appreciate their work in adopting the new code. Thank you.
Thanks. And also to Carl and to Skip and also to Ms. Butterfield for their, for their input tonight. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
We will be taking the next three individually because they are all quasi judicial requests and I have a short PowerPoint for each of these.
Quasi judicial. Excuse me Sally, before you go. Okay, council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the common practice of this city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings. Sorry, Sally, go right ahead.
Thank you. Ordinance 1325 is to consider a designation of a local historic landmark for the old post office which is currently functioning as Dana's Dance Studio. It's located at 210 West Midland Avenue as a legal description of the south 115 feet of Lot 12, Block 6 of the original subdivision of Woodland Park from the 1890s. And it is zoned, commercial business district and it is a request from the Frontier Station LLP. This is the Magistrelli family and I don't see that anyone is here. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Okay. We'll call you up in just a moment. So the Historical Preservation Committee has already reviewed and held a public hearing on April 2nd for this historic site. Here is a photo from the 1966 assessor records of the old post office in Woodland Park. It served from 1937 to 1969 when the post office was built across the way. And it was constructed by H.H. Robinson. He was a contractor and a furniture builder and quite the craftsman in Woodland Park. It has a 20th century style front with the parapet, recessed entrance, windows, transom doors, and decorative stonework. Its significance as serving as a post office was for community planning and development. Most communities are on the map because they have a post office. It's maintained its original historic character, so with this local landmark, we are able to honor its character and its significance to the community. This is a little map of how it sits on the Lot 12 in the old part of town and it does have a small addition in the back. Here's a photo from 1970s, the assessor's records and you can see that the Yoot Inn was also built by H.H. Robinson and is very similar in style. Here's a photo from the 1970s assessor's records and at that time it was high country casuals. So this was after it no longer served as the post office. And you can see Antler Alley right next door. What a change. So our recommendation this evening is to approve ordinance 1321 for the old post office. We have 1325. And recognize as a local historic landmark. And this will be the 11th building should you grant this landmark this evening. The benefits to the property owner is an elite class of special locations within our town. It is a proud moment for property owners to be able to have this designation and if they choose to do remodeling or modifications to the building, they will, for any exterior modifications will be reviewed by the Preservation Committee in order to ensure that it retains its character. But if they were to put on a new roof and would like to get tax credits, they are now eligible for state tax credits. So I would be happy to answer any questions and property owner may like to speak.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
When you designate this building or any building as a historical...
Landmark.
Yes. You can't touch that building. You can't, you can't change that building. You can't build another building. It stays.
You are able to modify or remodel your building. It's just that the character of the building must be retained in its historic value. For example, I did talk... For example, I did talk with these owners that they may, may like to do a second story on the building, which could be feasible as long as it is set back, and that the front of the building is retained in its character. And if they decide to demolish or to cha-change it totally, they can ask for the landmark to be removed.
And Sally, there is a difference between local historical designation and national historical designation, and that's, that's the one that is much more prescriptive and restrictive.
That's correct.
I'm just concerned about the future corridor of Highway 25.
Carol?
Sally, have you ever, have you ever had someone request that the historic landmark designation be removed?
No.
And do you have any policy in place for the consideration of that request?
The ordinance lays out the process for that, and it is reviewed by the Historic Preservation Committee, and it is up to the city council to remove the designation.
Any other questions, counsel?
I'd like to know if the owner has any more to add to the story of that building.
Let's ask. Young man, if you give us your name and address.
Brent Richardson, 10985 Fourth Street.
Did you hear the question?
Please repeat it.
What's your knowledge of the history of the building? Do you have one?
Uh, I actually learned a few things, so, thank you.
Let's hear them.
Just the builder, who the builder was, um, when the building originated. I didn't know it dated back to the 1890s. I had no idea. I thought it started in the 30s.
So, just what you've learned today. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well?
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer.
Um, you applied for this on your own, where, for what reason?
The Historical Society approached us, and after discussing, um, options, was there any ability to make further changes if need be? Would we want to, like Paul had said, you know, if we can't do anything to the building, this would probably not be something we want to do. So, we, uh, were told that there were things that we could further modify if the studio grew and we wanted to do that.
So, what benefit do you see in a scranniness for you as a, as a business owner?
This is something to be proud of in Woodland Park.
Are you prepared to go to the Historical Society's permissions of you being able to modify or alter your building in any way? Because when you want to replace a roof, or this building's made of stone, so even when you want to do some sort of mortar in your stone, you're going to have to see the Society and ask for their permission. You won't be able to use specific mortar. It has to be designated for that historical site to go along with the rocks that are in that building already. You want to replace the front door, you'll have to have permission. You want to replace those front windows, you're going to have to have a craftsman come in and change those windows exactly the way that they are.
Okay. Well, this doesn't make or break our studio, so either way is not a big problem to me.
Okay. I just want to be sure that you're aware of the restrictions.
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, we love Woodland Park, and that's why we're doing it.
Sure, and I just want to make sure you're comfortable because if you're not aware of the restrictions, or you're not comfortable with it yet, this doesn't have to go away until it's returned to us.
Restrictions haven't been detailed to that extent for us.
Those are the restrictions.
So...
Sally, would you want to speak to that?
If, if a property owner is needing to do maintenance or repair to their building, then it will be whatever is technically the best, and so it may not have to be the exact mortar that is on these stones at this point. The, uh, and it is the Historical Preservation Committee, not the Historical Society, who does this. They're two different bodies, two different organizations, and the Preservation Committee goes to trainings to be able to understand where their boundaries are, and we have staff who also advises them. And in fact, their front door has changed, and we would be very supportive with the existing door that is new.
What about the windows?
Windows, you can certainly upgrade the windows, but for example, if they were to propose changing the transom windows, then that is a piece that is the, protects the integrity of the building. Typically, we find that owners of historic properties, they are just as motivated to preserve the historic character of that building, so they would never suggest to do something out of line.
Thank you. Anybody else on council? We are in public hearing now. Anybody from the audience like to speak on this issue? If not, call for a motion to approve ordinance 1325.
So moved.
A second.
And a second. Suzanne?
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
No.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBarre?
No.
Levy?
Yes.
Swenier?
Doesn't matter, no. I said no.
Oh, no. Motion carries four-three. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Sally.
Um, if you don't mind, Mary Jo had another meeting. If I could go on to the third one and see if she has, uh, will show up for the Cow Hand.
Sounds great.
Thank you. So, I'm going to jump to the hearing on the Midland Terminal Depot. So, this public hearing is to consider ordinance 1327, designating a local historic landmark for the Midland Terminal Depot. And I consulted with Mel McFarland, who is this extraordinary train expert of the area, to learn what we should actually call the depot. It's been referred to as the Colorado Midland Depot, the baggage building, and he advised me that we should use the terminology of Midland Terminal Depot, and I'll explain that in terms of the history related to this building that is now located in Bergstrom Park, and that is an address of 211 West Midland Avenue, with a legal description of the west 100 feet of Block 3 Bergstrom Edition. It's in the central business district, and the request is per the city. This building is owned by the city. So, now for the history. In the top photo is the 1904 Colorado Midland Railway Station, and this is actually the second station that served the railroad, and this photo is courtesy of the U-Pass Historical Society, and that its significance is that this station burned down, not totally, but burned in 1935. And the portion circled in red is the baggage end of the building, and that was saved and used as the next depot. So, when the baggage building portion was reconstructed, it served as the third depot for the Midland Terminal. And it was in 1919 that the Colorado Midland Railway went into receivership, and it was at that time the Midland Terminal acquired the tracks, equipment, and facilities. The Midland Terminal had operated all this time from Divide to Cripple Creek. So, they were able to acquire this section, and you can see that the depot is sitting next to the last run of the Midland Terminal, which was in 1949. So, this is the last remaining artifact, so to speak, that we have in the city that is dealing with the railroad. Its historic significance and integrity is that after the railroad closed in 1949, the depot was moved to Memorial Park, and at that time, it was called Memorial Hall. It served as the first library in Woodland Park for a couple of years in the mid-1960s. It also served as a location for the charitable organization of the Clothes Closet. And then in 2015, the city moved it back to its somewhat original context, next to the railroad line in Bergstrom Park. And these drawings are from a set of construction drawings that David Langley has put together because we believe that in order to restore this building, and the intent would be to install railroad collections and memorabilia, and have a small museum that could be opened on, through the summer, and share the exhibits and the history of the railroad. So, we have a set of drawings that we have ready to move forward with remodeling of this building. The site plan, I, I'm sure you've all been to Bergstrom Park and have seen the building, and it sits just behind the rest area. So, here's another photo of the train in the Midland Terminal Depot, and the city would recommend approval, as does the Historic Preservation Committee, for, to designate the Midland Terminal Depot and amend the ordinance 1327 with the new name. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Counsel, questions? This is brought forward by the city.
I'm...
Carol?
Good question. I'm glad to see that we're actually doing something with the building.
Me too.
Uh, I thought it was just going to sit there and store things, so, I, I think it's got things in it right now, probably storing some city stuff, so I'm glad to see. I always thought we, we could have a nice museum in this town, and it sounds like that's moving forward.
I would like to thank David Langley for providing some plans that we can use for future development of that building, too. You did a great job.
It's truly part of our history, railroads. I love railroads. I'd like to get that engine out there, too, but this is truly a historical piece of Woodland Park.
Anybody else, counsel? Other comment? Anybody in the audience like to comment? Okay, if not, we'll call for motion to approve ordinance 1327.
Motion to approve ordinance 1327 as written.
Second.
Suzanne?
Carr?
No.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six-one.
Thank you. Okay, Sally.
One more, and I don't see Mary Jo Larson here yet, but she apologizes that she had a conflict this evening, uh, but she has made the nomination for her building to be considered with ordinance 1326, located at 200 West Midland Avenue. Legal description is lots 7 through 9, excluding the south 115 feet and the west 2 feet of Lot 9. She's in Block 6 of the original subdivision of Woodland Park in the central business district, as requested by the owner, Mary Jo Larson. So, we'll begin with this building that was constructed in 1893. Uh, this is an 1890s photo of the N.W. Terrell's Dry Goods Store. This is a photo courtesy of the U-Pass Historical Society. It is significant for its importance to commercial development. It was the primary mercantile location for this service center along the railroad. It is associated with some renowned families in Woodland Park, Foster, Sadler, Carols, Dugan, Hollingsworth, Stull is Mary Jo's parents, and Larson. It did have the only telephone in the building from 1921 to 1937. It was the first post office in town from 1927 to 1937. Its architectural integrity has changed over time, so, obviously, from the photo, in the 1940s and 50s, the historic clapboard siding was replaced with stucco, and in the 1960s, it added metal siding with a brick pattern and the stone wainscoting, as well as the boardwalk. Here is a diagram of those three lots and the location of this building, and here you can see it from a photo in 1910, uh, when we had the automobiles, the old Ford, Fords that now could drive up the pass and come shop at the Woodland Mercantile Company. Here's a family that's in front of the old, um, site, and dirt roads. It's always interesting to see the horses down the middle of the road as well. And here's in the 1950s, 56, the rodeo parade and the Woodland Food Market, and I imagine it could be Bert Bergstrom leading the parade. That was his role with the Saddle Club. He was a great supporter of this community. This is from the 1980s of the Cow Hand, and it hasn't really changed a whole lot since that time that the Larsons or the Stulls took over the building 50 years ago. So, with that, the Historical Preservation Committee and the staff recommend approving ordinance 1326, designating the Cow Hand.
Thank you, Sally. Counsel?
I, I'd like to add that now that we've gone through all three of these, has it been considered to put plaques on these buildings?
Oh, absolutely. That is part of the landmarking process, and so, uh, we have, I mentioned that there are 10 buildings currently that are landmarked. They all have plaques. Uh, most of those buildings are in History Park right now, as well as the Cultural Center, and then there are three private buildings, the Maytag House, the log cabin on West Street that used to be the insurance company, and then the medical building that's just, uh, south of the bank.
Great. That's great to hear.
It's just unfortunate that Mary Jo's not here because we listened to some of her stories at the Historic Preservation Committee meeting about the history of the building, even after she moved in. I think she said there's an Artesian spring in the back as well, and that was a source of water for horses. There was a trough in the back, and it's still there, but she was very much in favor of this designation.
Okay, we're in public comment. Anybody from the audience like to comment? Mr. LeBarre, welcome.
Pete LeBarre, 615 County Road, 281 Woodland Park, 80863. I have a question and then a comment, possibly, well, a comment as well. I have a question and then a comment, possibly, well, a comment as well. I'm just curious, did the property tax change when it has a historical preservation? Does not. Well, it should. But I want to say that I've been coming up to Woodland Park since I was a kid in the early 70s. And this building is a building that I always remember when I come to Woodland Park. And I would, since Mary Jo's not here, I will say for Mary Jo that if any building in Woodland Park should be designated, it should be the Cowhand. And it's still today. I think people see it as they come into town, and they recognize it as part of Woodland Park. It'd be a shame not to have that designation. So that's my endorsement.
Thank you very much, Pete. Anyone else from the audience? Counsel, do we have anything else? If not, we'll call for motion to approve ordinance 1326.
Motion to approve ordinance 1326 as written.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Suzanne.
Thank you. Case.
Um, yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
LeBarre?
No.
Levy?
Yes.
Soynier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries five two.
All right, thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Thanks for all your work. Appreciate it. We move on to New Business and Erin Smith.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, you adopted an ordinance or a resolution at your last meeting in which you appointed Suzanne LeClaire, the city clerk, as the interim city manager. That resolution also contained a provision that you would consider at this council meeting tonight, an adjustment to Ms. LeClaire's salary. And so this item is on your agenda for that purpose.
Thank you, Erin. Kelly, you want to start with this?
Sure, I'd be happy to. In, I just want to give a little bit of history. In my tenure on staff, when we had the absence of a city manager, we always, the council would appoint someone with the experience, knowledge, and ability to serve in their stead while the search can be pursued for a new city manager. And we always recognized the significant amount of additional duties that come with that role in the interim time. We call it acting pay. And it's an interim thing. It's granted to them to recognize the additional duties, and they are significant to compensate that person in an interim basis while they act as the city manager. And so it would only last, and I'm leading up to a motion, it would last from the date that they took that position. And in this case, the first day that they would have taken the position would have been the 20th of April.
They being?
She.
Thank you.
Suzanne LeClaire.
Thank you.
Took that position, and it would, their salary would be at that level until the day that the new city manager takes his new position, or her new position, depending on who that is, whom that is. So the acting pay would last for a finite period of time. And so with an understanding of that for the public, I would make a motion that we direct the finance director to, and the acting city manager, to increase the compensation salary for Ms. LeClaire during the interim period to $100,000 for that interim period, and understand that that is a finite period of time. And when the city manager that is hired takes that position, her salary would go back to her normal salary. So that would be my motion. And then that would be, the finance director is very capable of making that calculation on his own.
I have a second. Second. Just for clarification, I know everyone's looking like what's going on. And make it clear that what Suzanne's making and what she's going to make will be about a $20,000 difference for the year. And according to what Kelly's asking now, so again, if it's $20,000 for the year, it'll be divided by 365 days, and that number of days that she serves, she will get that additional pay increase. And that's what we'll be voting on next. So any other questions from counsel?
So just to be clear, it's for the public, it's a prorated daily rate?
Correct.
Also called influence.
It is that. We have a motion and a second. Suzanne?
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Soynier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries man and missly. Thank you, counsel. I appreciate that.
Suzanne, we appreciate you. You're doing a great job. You stepped into a tough spot, as we all know, and very much appreciate it. Thank you very much. Great job with the staff. I know they've got a lot of respect for you. Mrs. Harvey has to leave because she has bigger and better things to do for our country early tomorrow morning. Okay, that said, we're going to move on to public comment on items not on the agenda, and we will start with Michael Dalton.
Michael Dalton, 413 Woodland Avenue, Woodland Park, Colorado. Email scandals, death threats, backhanded deals, follow the money, the terms we normally use with dirty Washington politics. But over the last few months during the election, some citizens decided to use the system in which we've created. That system allows us to make core requests, public records requests. Over the past few weeks or months, people have made public records requests to the One council member in last council, if I remember correctly, Paul Soynier, said that we were wasting the city's time with these core requests. This is part of our rights as people here in the town. Through some of those core requests, I actually made a core request of council members' emails containing Michael Dalton and the Woodland Park Underground. I also received emails from business owners in town that had been sent emails from DDA board members. I also received messages on Facebook and other social media platforms. None of my requests were a surprise to the city. When I came and asked for them, I came and did the paperwork. I posted a post from a Facebook message, and the cops showed up at my door yesterday. Actually, they didn't show up at my door. They showed up in a Facebook message. We agreed to meet in downtown Woodland Park. I was then told that council members were blaming me for sneaking into offices or getting ahold of a picture from some personal notes. I posted this personal note on Facebook. It contained less than a few words, but they said council member Carr had called the city and was threatening to hold the city liable for his health. That's the brief statement of it. The messenger then got shot, figuratively, not literally. Tonight, it's obvious we don't have a council that can agree even on historical buildings in town. The information that I received about council member Carr's health and his statement about holding the city liable came directly from that panel. No one at the city sent me anything. No backhanded deal from Chrissy that they've blamed. It came from those people.
Mr. Dalton, you have a minute to go.
Okay, when the cops showed up, I could have asked for a warrant. I didn't. I turned all the information over to the police station. Miles can verify that. You guys ought to grow up. If you're going to get into public office, you're going to deal with scrutiny. And it's our right to go after public records. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next I've got.
I want to say one thing.
We're not going to talk back and forth, no, Mr. Dalton.
Okay, we're not talking back and forth?
No, we're not.
Have a good night.
Gwen Doughty, 19 Ponderosa Circle, Woodland Park, 808-63. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am here today on behalf of the Woodland Park School District School Board, and I'm here to congratulate you on your elections. You're welcome. And I also want to let you know that we realize that your role here is to best serve our community, and it's a great honor. And so again, we want to congratulate you on that. As fellow elected officials, we, the Board of Education, would like to extend an open invitation to each and every one of you to contact us with any questions or concerns that you may have about our school district. And I think in your packets, you should have our contact information for the school board. So at any time, please contact any one of us, and we will be happy to visit with you. We understand that a strong partnership between the city and the school district is crucial to our citizens and to the positive development of our youth. And so we continue to look forward to work together with all of you to continue to make the city of Woodland Park thrive. And again, congratulations.
Thank you. Gwen, before you leave, we appreciate it. We look forward to meeting the new superintendent.
Yes.
When will that happen? And can you come and introduce him to us?
Absolutely. We would be happy to do so. He's been back and forth. He's in Kansas, and I believe he was hoping to be back here in June. In June officially starts July 1st, but is eager to get to know the community and meet everyone.
Great. We're excited to meet him.
Yes, absolutely. He's excited to be here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have Sherri Carr.
Sherri Carr, 1291 Charwest Drive, Woodland Park. I was going to speak to Ms. Harvey, but she left, so the rest, I have some for the entire council.
And we can put that in the record so she can see it, too, if you want to.
Okay. To Councilwoman Harvey, I was in the audience at the last council meeting when you stepped way over the line and publicly brought up the private matter of Mayor Protam Valcar's health. Health matters should be handled with discretion, respecting an individual's right to privacy, as is required not only by law, but also by a much higher standard, that of human decency. Our city government has always done so, up to two weeks ago, when you, Councilwoman Harvey, were obviously not thinking clearly and chose the public forum to question my husband's health, and therefore his ability to serve as Mayor Protam. Perhaps I have missed something in your qualifications to make such a declaration. Are you a medical professional? Have you studied his medical records? The Carrs seem to have zero privacy lately, so it wouldn't be surprising if you had. You had no right to question his health in public. In fact, it violates the law. But since you have decided to make this subject public, let me reply in public. My husband is made and continues to make an excellent recovery. Let me remind you and the public, he has not missed one council meeting due to his health condition, which you showed such concern. There are others who have served on council in the past who have missed several consecutive meetings and have not had their ability to serve questioned publicly by council, which is correct and a considerate way to handle such private concerns. Any question of a council member's ability to serve, it seems to me, should be handled in executive session. You were wrong to publicly question my husband's ability to serve the council to all the citizens who are present in this room and to those listening at home. I believe you owe Mayor Protam Valcar sincere apology. And now I'd like to address the entire council. Let's generalize for a moment. There must be a sense that any of you, if you were unable to serve then and only then, should the pertinent facts be made public, and then orderly transfer would take place. And really, even then, it would not be the public's business why you decided to step down. Even public officials are entitled to a degree of privacy. I think we can all agree on that. It's a reasonable, expected behavior from our elected officials. Yet, this is a far cry from what has been happening here in Woodland Park lately. Some of our citizenry are insisting that every aspect of public officials' lives be disclosed, including every medical encounter. And these few are creating the expectation that life after an election, even as a non-paid volunteer, will be lived in a fishbowl. For example, recently, our every visit to the hospital has been reported on social media, even when we told no one where we were going. We even found out that the mayor was coming to visit Val at the hospital when a friend texted us and told him he was on our way. We didn't tell anybody that he was coming, but somebody saw on social media you were coming to our door. It was a nice visit, glad to see you. But wow. I mean, really, where's the privacy in that? I mean, we're glad to see you, Mayor, but we knew you were coming 10 minutes before you shut up. Think about that for a few minutes. How would you like it if it happened to you? You're trying to keep a little semblance of privacy through a difficult situation. You don't tell anybody except a couple friends, and somehow it gets out in public. Weird. It's creepy. Creepy. Why am I speaking to you this? Because the source of all these reports of my husband's recent illness were made on social media as coming from a source within City Hall. I believe that makes it the council's concern. How would you feel if it was happening to you? If you had a medical issue or some other very private issue, you expected privacy, and it isn't forthcoming? What if there was speculation on your condition, even down to comments like, "He deserves to be sick because he's so evil." And then in the next post, it's "Pray for Valcar," showing up as daily discussion topics. It seems like we all need to know, all we need to know is whether a council person is physically fit to hold office. An assessment all citizens should be comfortable leaving to trained and unbiased professionals has always been the case up till now. Once an individual is pronounced fit to serve, any digging for further information starts to look more like reality-based programming rather than responsible journalism. Journalism. I'd like to personally thank Norma Engelberg for not including any mention of my husband's private health matters in her Courier article last week. I consider that an example of really responsible decision from an ethical journalist. It may be interesting to some subset of the public to know when somebody, an elected official's cholesterol level is up, or whether he had an MRI last week. But sometimes, it just gets to be just too much. Doesn't affect the quality of his work or his job. We have to admit that voyeurism is not a good enough reason to violate medical privacy. I realize by bringing up this issue, I've forgotten any scrap of privacy we may have left. And I'll probably be ridiculed for this speech later on tonight on public media. I'm not going to watch. But I'm tired of swimming around in this fishbowl, even after Val's physician has reported he's federal work on council. There's also been a series of leaks of misinformation that began at the beginning of the campaign that have ranged from ludicrous to just plain outrageous. Why do I bring this up to you? They all have that common threat that they're coming somewhere from a source in City Hall. I don't know if it's somebody up here, like Mr. Dalton just claimed, or if it's somebody else in City Hall, but it saddens me greatly. I, too, personally volunteer and love this. I too personally volunteer and love this city, and I hate to think what's happening. Here's one you can find ludicrous, but apparently many on Facebook were outraged by the screenshot claiming to be from a City Hall source that said, "Val Carr spent $9,000 on his campaign, more than anyone in Woodland Park history." I was puzzled until I used to teach math. So, I said, $9,000. He put in $6,000 in the bank. He spent $3,000. First grade math. Hmm, $6,000 minus $3,000. I'm rounding to the nearest thousand here. I think somebody made a mistake and added, "Math challenged followers on social media were outraged. You may think this is harmless and even laughable, but so what? One can easily make the case that lies such as this on Facebook directly influence voters, and under Colorado law, it is a crime to knowingly make false statements in order to influence elections. Accusations are getting so frequent that I find myself explaining facts behind the innuendo in such places as the hair salon, the gym, the library. Luckily, the truth isn't hard to explain when you're puzzled out what the possible connection must be to this that is being so greatly distorted. No, I say, Val Carr did not steal money from the city as reported on Facebook, but several years ago, I figured this out, he was the treasurer for multiple 501(c)(3) groups and used our mailing address when these groups applied for and received community investment grants, following all the correct procedures like all the other applicants. Val's honesty and integrity are beyond reproach, and those who may spend city time digging through years of records trying to find anything against him are wasting our city's time and money. And I ask, is this the best they can come up with to feed social media's appetite for any possible hint of scandal? I'm asking for a higher standard of professionalism from council and city employees. Can't ask it from bloggers. From this minute forward, and a reminder of the applicable city's core values to this untenable situation: integrity, respect, loyalty, and trust. I believe this is what we all should be able to count on and deserve going forward, and my best hope is that you agree. Although it's not difficult to share the truth with citizens who ask, I really would love to spend my salon time chatting about more pleasurable subject matter. Thank you for your time."
Okay, Sherri, I just want to respond in a couple ways since you indicted me, if you will. To start with, I'm the leader here, and it always starts at the top. And so, I'm gonna apologize for the meeting two weeks ago because I didn't do a very good job of restraining Mrs. Harvey. I'll start with that. That's my bad, and I'll be the first to apologize. I'm still learning on this job too. Some things take me by surprise, and again, I apologize. I feel as bad as anybody. That said, you know, I was trying to pay my respects. Just didn't sound like it just now. I don't want to converse. I just want to, I gave you your time. Just give me a minute. I thought it was important that, I don't care if it's a council member or anybody that's part of our community that I know, I'm gonna take my time because I think it's as important as anything else that I can do for our community. And you can take that however you want. How it plays out on Facebook, I cannot be held responsible for. And for you to point to the city in that regard, I think is unfortunate because in this day of social media, we're not always sure exactly where that's coming from or how it was, how it started. And so, again, I appreciate your comments. I know council can do better, and we're working on that. And it starts right here, and I'm gonna do a better job. And I hope everybody else follows my lead, but I really appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to the mayor's reports. And I just have a couple of announcements tonight. Sunday, May 6th, from 7 to 9, that's this Sunday, Broadway at the Peak, Woodland Park Community Singers at the Ute Pass Cultural Center. Saturday, May 12th, that's a week from Saturday, from 9 to 1, is the Winners Farmers Market at the Ute Pass Cultural Center. And then Thursday, a week, excuse me, that's, yeah, that is a week from tonight, from 5:30 to 7 is the Chamber Business Hours. This time, it's at the Colorado Wolf and Wildlife Center, which is always a great place for that event. And lastly, Saturday, May 19th, from 8:45 to 3, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Spring Cleanup Celebration. And last year, I know we had hundreds of people, if I remember. Check in at 8:45 at the Ute Pass Cultural Center. And thanks to Woodland Park, Keep America, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful for that effort. It makes a huge difference in our community. Mr. Carr?
Thanks, sir. First of all, I handed over, the council handed over liaison to Paul Sagnier. I'm gonna continue with Main Street Subcommittee. So I'll still have an active role, just won't be on the board, and they do a lot of good work, and so I'm gonna continue doing that. Just to address a couple of issues, we were wonderfully grateful when the mayor showed up. I was like two days into a horrible experience. My wife's point was not that, it was very grateful to the mayor to show up. Our point was the shock at having it on social media right beforehand when we told nobody. But we were absolutely, it made my day, frankly. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming and doing that. It's one of the duties that's gratefully appreciated by the community. Secondly, the notation about the city was because certain Facebook posts always say, "This comes from a city source," so it's not just a random accusation. It's documented, it's photographed, it's screenshot, it's saved, it's in certain people's hands. So it wasn't an accusation that's unfounded. It may be unfounded because it was authored with lies, which is typical of where these things come from. That's the typical behavior of that source. So, there was no indictment except from statements from the same source. I want to congratulate all the new committee assignments, and I think we've got some great people doing some things. Noel and I have decided to do different things, so three years of service on DDAs is like astronomical. Anyway, thank you.
Kelly?
I just would like to agree with you, Mr. Mayor, on doing better, and thank you for your comments. Everyone on this council is committed to that and doing a better job, so thank you for your leadership.
Great. Hillary?
The only other issue I'd like to bring up, we talked about earlier, trying to find some funding for the maintenance of Woodland Park. I know I mentioned it to the mayor, and I would like to meet with, I don't think we can decide here at the moment, but I'd like to meet with Mike and Ben and see if maybe we can come up with some funding for that, for maintenance. And I believe that we can, so I'd just like to work with you to see how we can better do that.
Let's put that on the agenda for the next meeting, Suzanne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a great National Day of Prayer today, this evening. A lot of attendees, a lot of great words. I too want, Mayor, for the civility of this meeting. I welcome your interruption, and that was great. I see leadership coming out and a more calm City Hall here. I appreciate that. I deeply do. Thank you very much, Suzanne, for all your hard work. I like the canines. That's great. And I do appreciate the citizens of Woodland Park, and have a great night. And I appreciate what you said. I really do.
Noel?
I would like to bring something up, but it's gonna go against what everybody just said here about the election and things going on during the election. During the election, there were full-page ads that were promoting complete lies and accusations against myself and the mayor. But you never saw the mayor and I attack anybody else. So I just want to point that out, that during the election, I was attacked for no reason, and the mayor was attacked for no reason, and the group that was attacking, well, I think you all know who was part of that group. So it's interesting how we, well, I just want to point that out, so. Yeah, so the election was a shame. I mean, it could have been an easy election, it could have been a good election, it could have been a positive election, but there were certain groups that went completely negative. And I will, I am proud to say I didn't go negative at all, and neither did Neil, but other groups did. And I'm hoping that the next election in two years stays positive. It's all about Woodland Park. It is truly all about Woodland Park. We are just a passing council. There'll be other councils in the future that will make other decisions, but I think this election was very contentious, and I'm hoping that this never happens again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for coming. This meeting's adjourned. I'm sorry.
We have the staff report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
You left us out.
I left you out.
And the city's 31st.
Yeah, there's no city manager here, so I didn't know.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Sorry, Suzanne. Go right ahead. Erin has nothing.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. As promised to the council, a few months ago, I had promised the council that I would announce publicly whenever there's an opening on any of our boards and committees. So we had a resignation on the DDA. We have an opening currently for the DDA. That position has been posted on the city Facebook page and for all of the community that may be interested in that.
When will we decide on that, Suzanne?
That's due to us, Chrissy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. May 30th.
Suzanne, can you cover the requirements real quick, please?
I don't have them in front.
Okay, never mind.
But I believe you have to be either a business owner.
Correct.
But you should know, Noel, you're part of the committee.
In the district.
Yes, you have to be a business owner, you have to be part of a business within the DDA boundaries. That's it.
I think you can be a property owner also.
And a property owner.
They're all listed on the website. Sorry, I don't have them in front of me. The second thing, I just want to plant a seed with council regarding two upcoming council meetings. We have a council meeting scheduled for June 21st, where four of you will be at CML, so there won't be a quorum. Typically, in the past, we have canceled the meeting that occurs during the week of CML. So I want you to think about that. You can make a decision tonight or whatever you would like. And then the second meeting that I have to bring up is July 5th, is Symphony Above the Clouds, and our council meeting is that night as well. But what this would mean is if you canceled 6:21 and 7:05, that's two consecutive council meetings that would be canceled. I checked with Planning Director Riley, and she's arranged her schedule with different applications and people that are coming forth for permits and things like that, and she believes this would be okay. But I just want to put it out there for council to make the decision as to whether you want to have these two meetings or not.
Thank you.
Welcome. And then we have Miles.
Thank you. I'll try to be quick. We have a lot of people that do stuff behind the scenes, and they don't get recognized for it. We have Officer Gene Ramirez. He and his wife run Gene Tomlinian Heating, or Gene's Heating, out of Colorado Springs. And one of the things he saw was that our TASER equipment was starting to wear down and become defunct, and he and his wife went behind the scenes and donated eight of those devices to the officers, which was awesome. You know, previously, we had three or four that were working, we just passed them around during shift change. In addition to that, Derek Harvey was here from Canyon City PD to provide our accreditation, and his agency just donated 16 additional TASERS to us. So now we have one for every officer, and I can personally attest that those are a safer option for folks that are being noncompliant than using a baton or something like that.
How much do those things cost?
They're about $1,000 apiece nowadays. So we're using the really old versions, the X26s. The X2s are, it'd be about $26,000 to $30,000 to upgrade us. We just are not financially at that point where I feel appropriate to bring it forward. So this is gonna put us a few more years into the future. Last thing, because of weather, a couple weeks ago, we had to cancel our dodgeball event, so tomorrow at the high school, 3:30, we'll be doing the Kids vs. Cops and Firefighters Dodgeball Event, free t-shirts, booze, and all that good stuff for them. That's all I've got.
You say t-shirts and booze?
T-shirts, food, drinks, some door prizes.
Shots.
No booze, not for the kids. We're trying to promote, you know, just a good time, good time with the cops, so.
A good time with the cops.
Thanks, Miles. And then, Mayor Levy, we have Kip Wiley with a quick presentation this evening.
Great.
They're 28 pages. They'll go fast. Thank you for the kind words. Great staff, they're doing lots of good things. A quick wastewater treatment plant expansion update. It's been a couple months since the last one. A lot's changed as they're kind of wrapping up that project. Just to kind of hit some highlights, the West Eration Basin Partition Walls, Eration Grid, and Scum Line have all been installed, and that basin is back up in use. You saw a video last time of the blower installation, of one blower. You'll see pictures of the additional blowers that are installed and in use as well. You'll see some photos of the old belt press, which was the dewatering apparatus that was removed and the new screw press installed in its place, and that has went through its performance testing. And then, the old chlorine contact basin, which we no longer use because we use ultraviolet light for disinfection, that chlorine contact basin has been demoed, and a lot of concrete placement has gone in there for the new tertiary filter, which polishes the wastewater, if you will. And then, they have started punch list items. So I just got a couple photos here, just gonna go real quick. An aerial, here is the West Eration Basin. You can see how it's black in color, it's not in operation. They put in these partition walls, there's three of them, just to mirror the other side. And then also, what I want to point out is the third clarifier and UV area, which you'll see later, because walls were erected there and a roof installed over that. Here's the same area with the walls and the UV and the clarifier from the aerial, and then the roof going on that portion. Here's just another aerial, you can see the trusses here, and then also here. This lean-to structure was added to create flexibility for the operators and redundancy with our sledge holding. And then, from the further angle. Here's the installation of the additional blowers from the video you saw last time. This is just another one going into place. And here, you see all three blue boxes, if you will, where the blowers are installed. That was an upgrade. We upgraded to the hybrid blowers because we were tracking financially on schedule. Here is the West Eration Basin being filled, and the scum line to your upper left of that photograph, and we're slowly filling it, which took about three days. You can't just simply divert your influent flow into the basin. You always have to have an effluent, so the plant continues to run. So you have to be creative in how you divert flows and still have an effluent, if you will. The Oxick Basin, which is just the furthest basin to the south, put into use. Here's just some piping of the recycle system that has been installed and in use. This was an additional component to the plant that we added for better process and nitrification. And here's another photo of all that piping, and here you see three pumps, and then the piping behind it with the controls in front. piping behind it with the controls in front. Here's a photograph of the old belt press, the dewatering apparatus. This was removed out of this room, and this large screw press was installed. You can see there's not a lot of space to get that in, and the contractor was very creative, if you will, to be able to get that in, and this had to be done in a short amount of time. When you are operating a plant, you have a waste stream. That waste stream never stops as the flow never stops. So, you have to get the old dewatering apparatus out and the new one in and in operation so you can continue operating because you only have so much volume for storage. They did an excellent job of that. Here's just another picture of the screw press installed in the building. This is actually a picture of the inside before it was used. Here it's in use, dewatering sludge, you can see the mud, I'll call it, on the conveyor going into the compost hall. Here's what I discussed about the old chlorine contact basin. This basin was 14 feet deep, you can see the about one-foot-thick walls, they're 14 feet tall, those all had to be removed. Here is the equipment inside the building to remove those walls after they cut them. So, that was kind of fun for us, never saw a mini excavator inside the building. Here's afterwards with the floor that was put in place, and then all this steel rebar tied and started forming the walls for the tertiary filter. Here is the walls before they were poured and the walls after they were poured. This picture was actually taken today because they just finished stripping those today. The clarifier that is in place, so you have to put in the components of the clarifier before you can actually put on the roof. So, that's being installed, here's one half, and you'll probably never see these basins taken down again, so this is a rarity. Here's the other side of that clarifier. Clarifier is used to separate out the liquids and the solids. And here's the same clarifier space with the roof on it and all the catwalk to be able to service the appropriate areas. Remaining items, final grading landscaping of the site, the tertiary filter installation, and then punch list items, and scheduling the financials, still on schedule for June 30th of this year, and we are 87% through the financials. Any questions?
Unbelievable.
We got a great team. It's just a great team, I can't say enough about JDS Hydro, our engineer, Moltz, the contractor, and then our staff that you saw today. They're the boots on the ground, so I will pass that along to them. Thank you.
It starts right there. Great job, Kip.
Thank you. That's all we have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, I'm sorry to forget about the six of you. Val, one last, Val and Noel, one last thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sherri Carr read a statement, the mayor offered that since the councilman Harvey wasn't here, to put it in the record for the whole public out there. When you want to put something in the record, please request it to Suzanne Leclair, write it digitally, I assume that'll be fine with you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Would you like that in the record? Thank you. Noel?
We've talked a little bit about that, Councilmember Sawyer, with the mayor, and we are just going to try and get through these interviews because we're having so many meetings with the interviews, and then, once the interviews conclude, we'll start giving you all the workshops you want.
Thank you. On the back burner. Anything else, council? Suzanne, what else did I forget?
That's it.
Okay, this meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.